All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. First thing we'll do is the budgling. Preparing for votes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next, we'll...approval of the minutes. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Any questions, concerns, corrections? I know there were a lot of minutes.
There were a lot of minutes.
We'll talk about that a little bit later, hopefully. Anyone?
I make a motion to approve.
One second. All in favor?
I'm in.
We need a roll call, really?
We'll do a roll call as well.
Do we?
Oh, we're good roll here.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. Next, we have, we will move on to Agenda Item A. I believe, let's see what we've got here. Discuss and review the special use permit for Fort North Lumina. And I believe Mr. Frank and Mr. Wilson is gonna start off for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. This is a special use permit application for One Stone Street Partners LLC for the location at Fort North Lumina. The zoning district for this property is C1 Commercial District. So in April, staff did receive this application from Stone Street Partners LLC. They submitted an application for a special use permit located at Fort North Lumina. Mr. Samuel Frank is the authorized agent for the owner and the tenant. The proposed project on page 14 is the expansion of the kitchen space to include the former interior stairway. That's on A1, and I think when Sam gets up, he has a PowerPoint, you can look at it. That's just a small section in the rear, on the right-hand side of this restaurant. They're gonna adapt the use of the common area. This alley's located between the buildings for a full-service restaurant to include alcohol service. There's approximately 28 seats, and that can be found on A1. And this was approved, if you looked at the SGP, this was approved by the Board of Alderman some years ago. It was approved not for full service. No smoking was allowed and no alcohol was allowed in that area at that time. Number three, adapt the interior layout of the former Cafe Del Mar section of the restaurant. There's a bar, if you've ever been in there, on the very end of the building, the north end of the building, there's a bar area. They're gonna take that out, so having a bar, they'll have seats inside there. Removing the bar to incorporate additional seating, that's on A1 also. Staff did, it is required to have a technical review meeting with staff. We met with police, fire, planning was there. We did discuss the site plan and had a few questions, and they have, and I've attached it to, they have answered our questions here. We had some comments about the exterior lighting, it's gonna be required to meet the lighting ordinance. If alcohol sales are approved for Tower VII, does this include the area for Vito's? We had some questions about that. If any fencing or barriers are installed, they should be greater than, no more than four feet in height. And that came from the police department, they wanna be able to see you then after hours. Any occupancy increase will require a parking exception or a larger grease trap. I don't think they're asking for any more seatings. I think the seating is the same as it was before. Trash cans were noted, would be needed in the area. And then we just commented on noise concern from the residents at Tower VII above. And on page 15, you have the Section 155.4.5, the special use permits. And this gets into our responsibilities as the planning board. It's not a quasi-judicial hearing, this is just a site plan review. And we can, if you choose to, we can send our preliminary review comments to the Board of Alderman, and they can't consider any recommendation from the planning board, but we can give our comments, I think. On page 16, we did advertise for this meeting concerning the special use permit on April the 26th in Star News. We did, Robert did post the site and adjacent property owner letters were sent out on April the 26th also for this meeting. On page 16, we do have our Kama Land Use Policies, Section 5 Goals. We feel like this does meet our Kama Land Use Plan, Section 5, 1 and 2 there. Staff recommendation is to review and discuss the proposed special use permit for Tower VII. So in our attachments, we have the application, we have Tower VII, a couple of the SUPs, I did attach those. And then we did get a response to the comments from the technical review group is attached also. And Neil had some additional questions, I think Madeline or somebody from Morton Smith did answer most of those. And I did put some extra SUPs in front of Neil there to review what we did at Pose and other outside restaurants there. So if you've got any questions for me, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions?
Are these, are you talking about questions in addition to what Neil already put forward? I had a question about a couple of things.
You can ask them. Neil had some additional questions on other existing SUPs, wanted to look at those, and I did give those to Neil.
Right, so it's you that I asked the questions to?
Yeah, you can ask, yeah.
I just wanted to know about the grease trap with the additional...
Yeah, the issue, I know Public Works at times has had some concerns about the grease trap, but if they're not increasing incapacity, the grease trap will be fine, as long as they're not adding additional seats and things like that.
But they are adding additional seats on it, and where they're taking it?
Well, if you look, I think when they come up, they will address that. I don't think they're adding any more people or additional seats to the restaurant.
Somewhere I saw they were replacing the grease trap.
Okay.
I read that somewhere.
Not sure.
Yeah, I read that, I read that.
Okay.
My intention to it was that...
So typically, you're...
They're actually gonna increase the size, I thought.
Yeah, I thought there was increased seats.
They may, and I'm sorry if I missed that. When Sam gets up, he can address that.
All right. And the other thing was that parking, and this may be to you as well, I know that the employees use the parking spaces that are a lot allocated now, and there's really, there are, there are no spaces for your patrons.
Correct.
Okay.
Years ago, I think when Sam gets up, he can address your questions.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Tony?
So does the applicant, is it the owner of Tower VII business or the building, the property?
It's, the SUP goes with the property itself, not the owner, wouldn't be the owner, so it transfers. If it were sold tomorrow, you approve it or disapprove it, that goes with the property itself.
The property owner, not the business.
Not, not the business, goes with the property owner.
But the app, HHLSE is the owner?
Yeah, that's where I was getting...
Well, I think it's...
HHLES.
Operator.
Operator, yeah.
As the operator.
And it says on the application that it's got it as the property owner. But then I remember...
The property owner, I think, is One Stone Street Properties LLC.
Okay, so that's just a...
Right, the tenant would be...
Yeah, it said somewhere that it was applied for by...
HHS, yes, on page 19.
But it goes with the property itself.
It stays with the property.
Yes.
Tony, just real quickly, the access to the alley. So Tower VII and Vito's are the property owners' shared ownership, or there's some line down the middle of that?
Yes.
Is there some sort of easement?
We, the town does have an easement for a water, and I think it's a sewer line. The town right now, when I talk to Public Works, they're, they're looking to discontinue that at some point in time, where they're gonna run the water somewhere else. But the town doesn't have an easement there, yes.
So that easement is simply a utility easement, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So access for the public is therefore limited?
It is, but they're supposed to provide, if you read some of the SUPs, it talks about public access. So that's still, the public does have access, they just can't drive down through there. Yes.
Is there, will it be clear to get, I'll ask?
Any other questions, Tony?
Did we, did anybody comment about all of the technical review that we normally get there?
Well, you know, this is from that technical review.
Okay, is what they all...
It's not like, since this is a special use permit, we have to have a meeting together.
Okay, versus where sometimes we have, like, okay.
Yes, yes, but police, fire, we're all there, and Public Works.
Okay, perfect.
All right. Thank you. It's Frank.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to have the excuse to be back here in front of you again. Mr. Key, Ms. Baggett, I look forward to working with you in the years to come. Let me clarify a couple things before I delve into my presentation. The owner of the property is One Stone Partners LLC. That owner authorized both the operator and me to appear before you and pursue this special use permit. A representative of the owner is here in the room, should you have any questions for the owner of the land. The applicant is the operator, the HHES and so on entity is the operating company that you know as the Tower VII operation. The land located between the Tower VII building and the Vito's building is basically bisected by the property line. About half of that property belongs in fee simple to the Tower VII building, to One Stone Partners, and about half of that property belongs to the owner of the Vito's building. As Tony explained, there is a water, I believe it's all utility, water and sewer easement that comes through that property. And it's been understood since the outset and continues to be understood today, that use of that land is subject to the easement rights of the town. In other words, if the town decides that they need to come in and replace that water or sewer line, we've gotta get out of the way and allow them to do it, and that, that's understood. So it's a little bit of an unusual procedural setup here for a special use permit or a special use permit application in the town of Riceville Beach. That will ultimately be a quasi-judicial proceeding before the Board of Alderman. But this proceeding before the planning board is not quasi-judicial, and in fact, the Board of Alderman's not supposed to take into account your recommendation. So this is large, this is largely you helping us, this is largely for our benefit. It gives us an opportunity to consider input from those who are knowledgeable and care about the town from the role of the planning board, and we're grateful for it. We're eager to hear your comments, recommendations and suggestions. As to whether or not you actually take a vote and have a recommendation one way or another at the end of the meeting, obviously that's completely up to you. What's most valuable to us, though, is to hear your insight and to take that into account as we decide whether to move forward with this as is or to adapt it in some, some way, shape or form. The land's subject to a special use permit, has been for a very long time. That special use permit's been amended a couple of times over the years as the, as the use of the Tower VII building has evolved. Not, not talking to me yet.
Hold on a second, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. Today, we are asking for a revision to that special use permit for three specific purposes. That land is, is located in, so I'm gonna come back to this. This slide is the list of all of the criteria that you consider in connection with a special use permit, and I'm glad to come back to it later if we have any questions on it. The, the purpose of the request is three pretty discreet things. First, oop, huh, oh boy. I'm just gonna talk about them until Robert just comes in.
Can you hear Robert back in here?
I lost the presentation, sorry. Three specific purposes. First, at the back of the building, which would be the southeast corner of the building, there's an old stairwell that became defunct and redundant after the renovation work upstairs. It's no longer used. That's at the back of the kitchen. We have an opportunity to remove that interior wall and expand the kitchen space. One of the things that'll happen in connection with expanding the kitchen space is we'll be able to put in bigger grease trap then. And so you had, had some questions about that when Tony was speaking. Tell you unequivocally that we'll increase the size of the grease trap, that's one of the renovations that'll get done in connection with expanding the kitchen. It'll also give us an opportunity to, to improve the kitchen space from a prep standpoint, make the food delivery more, more seamless, more efficient, but also safer. Second, what used to be known as the Cafe Del Mar space on the left side, if you're, if you're standing on the middle looking at the building, had a bar set up at the back corner. There was a time when that was a separate restaurant space. Over the years, it's become part of the same operation. A bar's not terribly efficient for seating or for serving people, and hasn't been utilized as a bar in a very long time. And so the interior seating layout is being revised, and in connection with that, we're gonna get rid of that bar and incorporate tables. The number of seating spaces in the restaurant, post-renovation and before, are exactly the same. So the occupancy for the restaurant is rated at 86, that's the fire rating. The number of seats in the restaurant is 63. There's 63 seats in the restaurant today on the seat, on the SUP as it exists today and on the revised site plan as it is moving forward. The third revision is to adapt the outdoor use space to make it full service. So under the SUP today, there's allowance for food service on the outdoor space. Thank you, thank you. That food service is limited, though, expressly by two things. One, no smoking, and two, no service of alcohol. The existing SUP doesn't have a number of outdoor seats. It just identifies that you're allowed to have outdoors, or we are allowed to have outdoor seating, and that we're to share that outdoor seating with our neighbor, with Vito's, which is historically what's been done. There's, there's a handful of picnic tables out there, we count approximately 36 seats based on the historic layout, but that's not depicted on the SUP on any prior site plan, it's just the number of seats that, that have in fact been out there. This proposed revision does two things with regard to the outdoor seating. One, it establishes a specific site layout plan for the seats for Tower VII, that's what's shown in green there. That includes 28 seats. And it also changes the limitation on alcohol service to allow for full restaurant service in that outdoor space. Those are the two fundamental changes. The, the building also has incorporated a door, which you can see on the site plan there at the bottom right corner of the outdoor space. That door, of course, provides a practical point of access for food service. We've already commenced that food service, again, that's something that's permitted under the existing SUP, and is now part of the, the operation of Tower VII. And that door makes that delivery far more, far more realistic. Another subtle change, but one worth mentioning here, is we're getting rid of one of the doors on the front of the building at Lumina. With the reorientation of the space on the south side of the building, the right side of the screen, we are striving to establish the main entrance off Stone Street to help reduce the, the foot traffic that's standing still on the outside on Lumina, and also to make for a, a more reasonable entry into the space. As you can see, there'll be a desk at that door where the receptionist can greet people, provide takeout food, and also limit the amount of foot traffic both through the restaurant and on the sidewalk to get people from the point of entry and to a table. So, talked about the kitchen expansion, explained the, the new seating layout and the outdoor, outdoor area. I'm gonna show you some images now to coincide with what I just described. So here's the, that, in the top right, that, that dotted red line is the wall that'll be removed. The space that's behind or above that, that dotted red line is the space that will be added to the kitchen. The red line on the left shows you where that current kinda awkward bar is situated and the intent to remove it and the seats that will take its place. And then this shows the, the new proposed outdoor seating area. The, the current SUP does not include any limits on hours of operation. Tower VII as an operator has enjoyed a fantastic history of being a responsible corporate citizen. As a matter of course, the restaurant closes on, on weekends in the summer at 10:30, and during the off-season, it closes at 10:00 PM. It is, of course, a full-service dining arrangement, and that lends itself to a, both a positive experience for our customers, but also a relatively integrated and comfortable use as part of the community, part of this very vibrant urban corner. Let's see, that's all I wanted to say about that specifically. With this change to the SUP on outdoor seating, we don't, nothing about what we're proposing here has any impact on the way that Vito's uses the shared outdoor space. So we do propose to, as you can see on the plan, have a delineation of the area of the outdoor space that's utilized by one restaurant and the area that'll be utilized by the other. But we also recognize that this SUP only applies to Tower VII's use of that space, and so it wouldn't be appropriate for us to propose any sort of control over Vito's use of their, their portion of the space in connection with this. There's a question about trash cans. There are trash cans in that shared space today. Those trash cans are maintained by Vito's. Because we are a full-service restaurant, trash is not an issue once we've got the door and we've got the waiters going back and forth to the space, because of course, the part of the, part of the arrangement with full service is that all of the, the remaining things at the end of a meal are cleared out by the, by the staff on any given table. Parking, you specifically asked about parking. Both the SUP and the lease contemplate a specific number of parking spaces to be maintained for the, for staff, and that's exactly how they're used. Obviously, the benefit of being in this very urban location in Riceville Beach, I'll say that generously, recognizing we're a small town, but you don't get much more cosmopolitan in Riceville Beach than you do at the corner of Stone Street and Lumina. The off, the on-street parking, excuse me, and the opportunity for pedestrian traffic more than, more than substantially supports the business. I've got a couple images, and these are, these are not intended to be literal, this is intended to give you an idea of the feel, and so with regard to the actual table placement, please reference the site plan. But this is intended, rendering is just to give you an idea of the feel and intention for what we're looking for with the upgrade to that, to that courtyard. It's been brought to our attention that the exposed bulbs are inconsistent with the code, and that's something that, something that we know that we have to change.
I've got a quick question. How would be separated between Vito's area and the Tower VII area?
It's subtle, you can see there's, there's planters depicted here. That, that separation is more visual than physical because a thoroughfare for pedestrians is an important component. So whether there's a specific easement or not that allows pedestrian access, the existing SUP requires as a condition that we maintain pedestrian access through the alley, and of course, that exists today, that's the deal today, we're not trying to change that. And so the delineation where that dotted line is, horizontal dotted line that separates Tower VII space from Vito's space, what we envision there is planters, you know, something that'll be, again, relatively soft and plainly allow for, for pedestrians to pass through. That's a good question. I'm gonna ask Brian Brennan, who's with the operator, do you have intentions in that regard?
Yeah, the furniture is designed to be brought in in some form so that it's not abused or it doesn't walk off.
Who do you secure, name for the record?
Yes, Brian Brennan, President of Harget Hunter LES as Livid Surf and Tower VII K38 Restaurants.
So you do envision bringing those in?
Bringing the chairs in, securing the tables, based on the space, yes.
Thanks, Brian.
Do you mean active clothes?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. So what you tell...
Go ahead, be fine.
Are, I mean, Vito, are you got, okay, let me do this, do that. Both sides are gonna be equally as nice?
We haven't had the opportunity to influence the outfit of the space, if you will. So I've shared our intent and, from a design and a concept, starting with the beautiful renderings that we had, that Ross secured for us. I've been in discussions with Mr. Norris and tried to share the vision that we have and what we've had for the space all along, but we unfortunately can't direct them to purchase new tables. We haven't convinced them of that yet.
So you're basically dealing with your stack?
Yes, ma'am.
Will there be a division? I, I know that, that picture shows a planter and the Vito's side being, everyone's gonna walk through, and I'm sure they're not gonna go for that, because the pictures I took yesterday, there's, is completely covered with chairs and picnic tables and, and all of that. So you're telling me what's out there now, is that gonna go, is gonna be something different?
We intend to modify when we speak to the planters and the delineation or the ability to separate a distinctly different dining experience between what guests would expect from us at Tower VII and what guests are accustomed to at Vito's. That's more aesthetic to give a sense of that delineation, but we have paused in terms of what we are putting into the space to move through these proceedings and determine exactly how we go about that.
So your vision is to have half of it, where just people that are eating it? The reason I'm asking this is because of the chaos, 'cause I can't think of a better word to use, where the hot dog trolley stop and workshop and all of that, who can sit at that table and who can sit at that bench? So are you envisioning, and I'm going back to that one picture that you had, a planter said people on this side would be Tower VII only, and how do you propose that?
So...
There was a picture you had that...
The site plan that's on the screen is more accurate than the rendering. I'm glad to go back to the rendering, but this shows, the rendering shows a walkway along the right side.
Right, that's where Vito's...
And that's, that's not the way we ultimately laid it out. Instead, we put the walkway down the middle. But yes, through signage on the tables, again, planter-like soft sort of visual barriers, and the fact that the servers at Tower VII are actively seating and serving people at those tables, that's, that's the goal and the intention, that those tables will be utilized by Tower VII's customers. So today, there's nothing about that layout or that use today that's inconsistent with the SUP. The thing that we're asking to change about the SUP is in connection with that outfit and revised layout, that we also be able to provide full service, meaning that we'd be able to provide drinks in addition to food to people who are sitting outside.
Cause you're already sitting outside, right?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
I think fences will help a lot.
So the fence is limited...
I think that'll keep things low. It's just kinda trashy all in there at night, and people sitting with their nasty bathing suits on top of tables, and I think, I think that'll create more of a, you know, space wherever, you get a fit, I'm saying?
I do. And, and the fence is limited in height and obviously has to be able to either open freely or have a gap in it to allow that pedestrian thoroughfare. But to your point, when you approve the aesthetics of a space, you improve people's behavior and individual appearance in that space. And obviously, what we're trying to achieve is to, to ratchet up the feel of that space and the dining experience that people can have when they're in it.
And given that, and I commend Tower VII for always closing right there around that 10 o'clock or 10:30 time, especially in the weekends, knowing that and knowing there'll be alcohol outside now, this goes through, how do you prevent folks from ordering a drink at 10:00 or 10:30 or 10:15 on a Saturday and then staying there, cause it's outside, till 11:00, 11:30, 12 o'clock?
Maybe speak to how you handle closing time. Is that, when, when does the last order go into the kitchen or to the bar if you close at 10:30?
Well, he's talking about the alcohol, though. We weren't necessarily talking about...
I've experienced different versions of this in my past managing restaurants, particularly with outdoor spaces considered. Do you have a harder stop relative to what you might expect if you walk into a restaurant as a guest half hour prior to close? You expect to get a full service and not to have people sweeping the floor around you and shooing you out. That's the type of experience we provide indoors, and if anything, I think it would be a simple matter of having a hard time confirmed, at which point we could usher those guests inside based off of that determined time.
So I do wanna be fully transparent and candid about the operating hours in that that's just practically what's been done. That's how Tower VII has handled their operation all these years. And so it's a, it's a self-policed phenomenon, the fact that you don't have noise... The fact that you don't have noise and other challenges associated with customers from that location on a regular basis is not because of any sort of town-imposed shutdown time, it's just the way the business is chosen to operate. If your suggestion is intended to tell us that we need to propose a certain cutoff time or a certain nobody's out there any longer time, that's not yet in our application, but it's something that we could consider incorporating it, as your suggestion.
Miss conditions that can be, you know, if we decide to vote on it tonight, just like with anything else we've done, we can add conditions. But I know what Margaret was saying because, you know, what keeps, what's gonna keep when Tower Seven's closed and, and, you know, there's no drinks, what keeps the Vito's crowd from coming over there and spreading out at 1:00 AM with pizza? And, I mean, is that something that is...
Well, they're gonna move their chairs inside, so that'll, that'll be one...
Yeah, that'll help.
But you are gonna move for sure, though?
So, that's our intention, is to take the chairs inside, but the literal answer to your question is that it's beyond our control.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I...
Yeah, I mean, we can only control our operation, right? And this is not designed to be a, well, it's visually going to be a more limited access outdoor space, it's not a secured outdoor space and, and really can't be, consistent with the other conditions that we're obligated to abide by. So, the pedestrian, the right for pedestrians to have thoroughfare through that alley, said another way, is not limited by any hours of the day and we can't, you can't police that.
Now, that was a question I had. So, when you're telling us they have, they have the ability even when you're serving for people to cut through that alley and walk through, you, you've got to provide that?
That's what the current SUP says, that's correct.
Well, I would assume if you're spending money on tables and chairs, you're gonna wanna protect your tables and chairs from the shenanigans that have gone on in the past. So, hopefully, you'll be as invested in it as anybody else would be at keeping that out of it. Question related to that.
Yes, ma'am.
You've been serving food outside, frankly?
Just recently started again.
You have been serving food? And you had tables and chairs out there?
Yes, that's all in the last six weeks.
Yeah, so you have, you haven't had outdoor, the thing you, the thing you haven't had is alcohol.
Correct. The, the addition of the chairs is really commenced with patio season this year, as we've gotten into this process, based on the access that was created on the side of the building that Sam mentioned. So, prior to that and without that access, it really served no purpose for us. And it was in the process of these deliberations that we realized that the attempt at serving food would be a warm-up from an operational exercise standpoint to understand the impact on the business with our kitchen size, increasing occupancy by nearly 50% is no small task, but something that we are certainly looking forward and interested in taking steps to ultimately, and hopefully get to that full approval for, for use of that restaurant space.
So, you're used to dealing with Vito and...
They've been our neighbors for a long time, and we are familiar with what happens. We're usually the ones cleaning up the courtyard space because of the difference in hours of operations, so we manage that accordingly and ultimately want that to be a better space than what it has been in the past.
Would you utilize this space as a waiting area for individuals getting some lengthy wait times in the summer?
Right. This will help, hopefully help reduce that wait. We actually increased the standing room based on the neutral seat count indoors, the change of, the proposed change of that middle door, which opens up right to our service well, which is literally the worst place anybody would wanna be. So, we are consciously trying to create more space. That's more specific inside, based on how that was designed, whereas we would intend to make use of every square foot we have for dining guests.
I think where I'm getting confused, or not confused, and maybe I'm just not seeing the vision that you guys have, I'm seeing this entire alleyway completely outfitted in tables and chairs from Tower Seven, right?
The front half of that...
The front half.
...belongs to Vito's. We, those tables that you see today towards the back.
The picture I took yesterday where the picnic tables are, which are right on the sidewalk, that's Vito's. So, you're just talking about the back part? Because when I look at this picture and this stuff, that's must be what I'm missing. So, the back half would be Tower Seven, front half would be Vito's.
Do you mind if I walk up to the TV screen and point a little bit?
So, and it's, it's difficult to read on the screens, it's, this area forward is what will continue to be used by Vito's, this is Lumina here. And then this area in the back is what we maintain and operate at Tower Seven.
So, the backside of the alley, you like it?
Is there some sort of agreement that says you get the backside versus the frontside with Vito's, or is it just gentleman's agreement?
That was mutually understood. We attempted a different approach. What I had understood is that Mr. Norris had imagined something split down the middle for the sake of making the best use of the space and not having the confusion of our guests sitting side by side, we came to an understanding for this application.
Yeah, because is there a determination of what their footage back is, or?
No, it's just agreed upon.
Okay.
And importantly, not part of the SUP.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's really, there's been a coexistence there for a very long time.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is an evolution of that coexistence, but we have a reason to believe that it'll work mutually beneficial for, for both operators. So, I did bring hard copies, larger hard copies of the site plan. Is anybody wanting 11 by 17 of that?
If you had a...
Mr. Brennan, one quick question. So, practically speaking, you have Tower Seven or the owner of Tower Seven that has an SUP, and then you have the owner of the building of Vito's that has an SUP, two different owners, right?
Yes, sir.
So, if you're going to ask the Board of Aldermen modify your SUP to allow alcohol sales?
Yes, sir.
Then, if you're going to have a drawing like this, where you're going to be providing alcohol sales onto Vito's property, technically Vito's property, because it's split down the middle, so those chair, those tables on the left are on Vito's side.
Okay, I'm with you, thank you.
Wouldn't you need to modify both SUPs instead of just one SUP?
So, the SUP to date doesn't draw any lines on the ground? It's just...
It says have.
It's just yours, right? It's just your SUP, though. You, you can't have an SUP on someone else's property, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think I understand your point that without a, an easement, I mean, there is a, a real property interest, there is a right to utilize the portion of Vito's property that is included in what we're showing in our, our outdoor space and a reciprocal right for there to use ours, but that's not been reduced to, you know, it's a license at the moment, it's just a, an agreement that hasn't been reduced to an easement. And, and I appreciate your point that this would be more clear if there was some sort of permanent real property interest.
You're the expert on this. So, that's what, I would say that if you're going to modify an SUP and that specific SUP doesn't include, I don't know, that's...
I see what, I see what you're saying, that's a fair point, yeah.
We don't have a copy of the Vito SUP, right?
Do you, does it, does Vito serve alcohol outside?
No.
They don't serve alcohol. They don't have beer.
I don't, I don't wanna go too far because I don't represent Vito's and this isn't about Vito's operation. My understanding of the Vito's SUP is that it does not contemplate outdoor service of alcohol. But, my understanding of the practical operation of Vito's from having gone to Vito's is that it's over-the-counter service. And so, their customers choose where to sit with their food and beer from Vito's.
Well, they don't have beer.
No beer.
Okay.
I was, I was thinking I had read that.
Well, I, I agree with you on that, you're not here for them, but when you share an alleyway, they come into this.
They'll come into it regardless.
So, I, I know you're not representing them, but it is, we do, I guess, have to consider, or do we, Tony?
I guess my point is we can't, through this process, this application, you can't, we nor you can impose any controls on Vito's operation.
Yeah. I wonder how y'all do that with the shared space?
It is, it's a shared space without a...
Shared agreement.
Recorded agreement.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I think a simple recorded agreement or some sort of agreement takes care of it.
Yeah, I wonder if y'all could get some kind of agreement.
I appreciate the suggestion.
Do you know the genesis of having to have this pedestrian pass through?
How do you not?
Tony, do you?
Yeah, I think if you look on page, I started, I was looking at that when we were discussing public access, and it was a condition from the board. Let me read it. It, it, on page 47 or page five of the SUP, it says, "The public access through this area while limited by the tables and chairs will not be prohibited." So, the board's always intent was to make this, have this a public, public way there. Let's see. Board, that this still...
I guess I find it strange, I mean, it doesn't really say the rationale they used in coming to that conclusion, just says you have to allow for it, but what they were trying to accomplish is an obvious...
Well, I think they, they, yeah, it used to be where cars would drive in there, what they wanted to do was block off the cars. They thought it would be a good idea to have the, the tables out there for individuals to sit, and that they didn't have concerns about other things, the alcohol, but they still wanted public access, and I think that talks about, they still have tables and chairs, and people's gonna have to maneuver around those tables and chairs, so.
But 100% of the parking, or I should say, the space behind the buildings there, both eight, four sets, two, I don't know if I called them all, but it's all parking for those, those establishments, including, I guess, there's another apartment.
Yeah, and, and a lot of those were built prior to any zoning, probably, I mean...
Early 40s.
Early 40s, but at some point in time, there was no parking required in a C-1 district, just like downtown Wilmington. You don't have parking for buildings, you have parking decks somewhere else and typically you walk to them. So, that was the thought process, but somewhere we took that out for, we just did it for permitted uses, offices and things like that. We didn't do it for restaurants because we felt like there would be a need for parking exceptions and things like that, so.
I guess you could always request that they just take that into consideration, but...
One other question I wanted to...
I, I suppose we, we could, although the character of that thing is, is indeed a public pedestrian thoroughfare, and I'm reluctant to suggest that, that we use the private landowner to take that away. It is, it is consistent that it appears in the, the prior iterations of the SUP, I did notice that from, from reviewing and preparing this. Yes, ma'am?
So, this, this is probably not even our realm, but are you concerned about liability issue with the way you're dividing it up, so if Vito's is on your actual physical property and something happens? I, I just...
I, I'm gonna take your suggestion to heart, similar to Mr. Wortman's, that in the absence of a more established easement agreement to address use and liability and the like, there is some inherent risk associated with that, that's a good point.
On the drawing, the upper right-hand corner, it's just a little under the banner up there, but it looks like it's a doorway into the building. Is it a doorway?
I think you may be...
Are you talking about right here?
Yes.
That's outside, that's outside.
It's the riser room? So, it's an access to a...
It's access to those units, right?
Any other questions?
That's the extent of the things that I wanted to present here, and very interested to answer any questions you may have. And thank you again for your insight, we'll absolutely take it to heart as we, as we approach the next step, value any other comments you may have for us.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna open up this to public input, does anyone want to speak on behalf of this? Seeing no one would like to speak, close the public input session? Oh, okay, sorry.
Ross Thomaselli, I'm with One Stone Partners LLC. I'm the owner of Fort North Lumina, the property itself. I've been working with these guys for a while, been working with these guys for a while. Jim Skiba, he owns next door, Marvin's the, the pizza shop next door. So, this is something we've been talking about, six months to a year now. A lot of these smaller things, these details have kind of been handshake agreements, but if we need to, you know, get them in writing, I'm sure that would be fine. I think we're all on the same page here with what we're trying to achieve. We understand there is some liability involved in it, and if we can, you know, get stuff in writing to avoid that, that would be great, but we're all in favor of it.
Can you, I'm sorry, before you walk away, could you tell him, what did you, the two people you introduced?
I'm Jim Skiba, I own the Vito Sweetwater Building.
Okay. The building, okay, got it.
And I'm Anthony Mark, I'm the general manager of Vito's.
Okay, got it. Manager of Vito's?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll add, Neil, to your point, I always thought it was kinda weird that it had to be left as public space. If, if we wanted to change it so that it was just for the clients of the two restaurants, I don't think any of us would be opposed to that, so.
I think that was part of the deal back then, wasn't it, Tony? It was trying to make people feel better about closing the, the access, and so they, they prevented cars, but they still let people go through. It was a compromise that...
Quite a while ago, one get open for fire trucks, and then about 20 years ago, the fire department said, "We don't really need that anymore." So, that's, that's what it fits the hallway across the path, and then close off.
I don't see any need for that to be a public...
I have a question I have, it's probably to the property owners, regarding the access to the residence. Is the access all on the east side of the parking lot?
Yes, it's all on the east side, it's all exterior, so it's back in the parking lots. They're actually crossing each other.
And, and all the parking that's back there is for employees or residents?
Yes.
Well, Vito's, I think, has...
We have a couple spots for customers to come for takeout and dining.
Oh, restaurants in the 80s, yeah, they have one parking spot for four chairs, that's going away, they do have some parks.
I was just thinking that if it was just the residence, that, that there's an argument that, to, to close that off to public, but if your clients are coming in from the backside there, um...
Sounds like it was just baby steps.
Yeah.
Back then, to kind of...
I think we kinda have an agreement to kinda multi-mix the alley use for customers that...
Can you come up and...
I'm sorry.
We've got a... Hang on a second, if you could say your name for the record, we have, we're recording.
I'm sorry, I'm Anthony Mark, general manager of Vito's. And, um, we've had a kinda agreement with Ross, kinda to mix and use the place together, kinda like Josh had it with Keith. Keith's out of town right now, so I'm in this place. So, I think, we kinda have an understanding of how to use the area, like, we're not really stepping on each other's toes, and I have access to go through their dining area, like, there's like a path, you know, because they have tables on the right and to the left. So, there's, there's, I'd say about a yard or so of room for customers and public to pass through, so.
You're talking about the whole alley?
Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm.
Because I walked through there yesterday, it's, it's a little tight, I mean, but, I mean, I got through it, but, I mean, it's still a little tight.
That would be the one drawback of closing it to the public, would be you'd lose that back access since you do have parking.
Yes, I think...
I mean, would your people go around? You know, I mean, I, I would agree, it'd be neat to close it off.
I think maybe the, the front, maybe, but the back would be access for customers, their customers as well to come through, through the back as well. If they're leaving the beach or something, they wanna come...
I think they're trying to filter all your customers through that Stone Street entrance on Tower Seven, that...
Yeah, but they have the, the staircase in the back for people to come through, and basically, we just walk through, and their customers as well would be more welcome to come through the front if they needed to walk through, basically.
What are your hours of operation?
Hours of operation, right now, we're closed for lunches, but the weekends we're open for lunch, and then dinners, four to 11, and then the weekends, four to two sometimes. But in summer, we're open from 11 to 10, Monday through Thursday, and then 11 to 2:00 AM Friday and Saturday, and then we close at nine on Sundays.
No alcohol sales?
Uh, we do have alcohol sales, we just sell canned beers.
You do?
I remember that, I read that, I knew I read it. You, you go, Kenny.
Yeah, we, I, I think we had a kinda understanding with Josh in the past, for mixed use for everyone to kinda use the area, and then we, we kinda still have that, you know, and I think as far as their back seating area, it's, we're fine with that. We have still four pitting tables for everyone to use up front.
So, you do sell beer?
Yes, ma'am.
When somebody goes in and gets a slice or whatever, and they get a beer, where do they go, in the alleyway to eat and drink?
Uh, they have it, right? Uh, they have it, right, they're in the alleyway, at the front part of our parking tables, or they have it in their, our dining room.
So you technically have been allowing outdoor alcohol?
Alcohol, outdoor.
To, to a certain extent, yes.
But that, we don't govern alcohol, right?
That was one of the conditions, they wasn't supposed to serve alcohol.
Yeah.
We haven't had problems for 15 years with ALA or anything, but, I mean, we, we monitor it closely and, um, but it's on premises only. But likewise, we could, uh, it's good pizza. You know, we just did some pizzas for the, the school, I think on Friday.
So, since you're up here, um, do you have any, um, plans to improve that space?
Well, I think what they've done with it so far has really been knock out of the park. Um, and I'm in the process of refurbishing the picnic tables as well. And then, um, I've recently brought a, a pressure washer and stuff to kinda upkeep it and it's, uh, it's a very long night after the college kids leave on Fridays and Saturdays. I usually get home about four in the morning.
Yeah, we were kinda talking about you before you got in. That you would clean it up a little bit.
Yes, ma'am. Mm-hmm, we used to, I think a few, when I first started, we had a, like a commerce group, business owners, we would all have meetings about that kinda stuff. But I think that's been disbanded.
Pliss chief used to do that, they don't do it anymore, I don't think.
Okay.
So any other questions you guys have for me?
I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wants to speak? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Discussion, guys, anyone, any more questions for attorney?
I'm still a little, uh, unclear as to what Vito's SUP reads, but what they're permitted to do and what they're not permitted.
I think it's pretty clear, some of these things.
I haven't seen the document, so I don't know. We don't have a copy of that document in the package.
Why do we need a copy of that document? Cause since we're talking about, you're trying to compare them as like one, the same thing? Is that what you mean?
Trying to understand if there's, if there's, if we're gonna go down a path where they're gonna be significantly different. I have a, I have a handful of other SUPs for other locations in your town and there's, uh, there's some consistencies and there's some inconsistencies and we touched upon them in our conversation this evening, just be, just with regard to, uh, Tower Seven and now Vito's. So that's what I'm trying to understand it.
But we don't use Vito's SUP to judge. They're interrelated, but they're not.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the consistency of outdoor dining across the town. And what, what has the planning board and what have the, ultimately what has the Board of Alderman approved unconditional use permission, especially.
As far as alcohol or?
The whole.
Cause we did the outdoor seating at the Shark Bar and alcohol's allowed.
Pose.
And we also gave a lot, we did a lot of conditions on Sharks. I wouldn't involve in pose, but Sharks Bar, you know, if you remember, we did a lot of conditions, you know, no umbrellas, um, no glass, no, I mean.
That's a little different.
Yeah, cause it was all on the sidewalk and then there's a public.
So everybody, it's all gonna be different.
Right.
You know, there's, there's stipulations around hours of operation, uh, no outdoor music or no live bands, stuff like that. So that's, that's why I'm raising it. Trying to understand what's the range of things that the town has enabled. So I'm trying to do that homework.
Our digging can only do so much, cause like he said, we can't, only just make recommendations.
I understand.
No, well, just in reference to the SUP and what, just, no, no, you don't need, we're just saying, we could, as you said, we are only here to give you suggestions and help you move forward. It doesn't necessarily go directly.
Well, so to me, it's like, you're here for Tower Seven and Vito has their own deal. And so if the town is gonna give you permission to do something, they're not gonna say, well, they're gonna deal with you and they're not dealing with Vito. Now, if Vito's breaking some kinda something, that's what the town to worry is, not for the planning.
What do you mean? You mean now serving alcohol?
They're serving alcohol without permission, that's their problem, that's not your problem, cause you're asking for.
You're here, you're here for Tower Seven, not this.
I, I agree with all of your comments, Ms. Brin. And, and Ms. Kaval, because this is in the nature of a forum where we're receiving feedback, um, there's nothing to, to stop you from providing additional feedback. I don't wanna belabor your time.
No, but we can't.
But if you wanted to, Mr. Brig, you wanted to review the, uh, other SUPs and then you had additional questions or thoughts that you felt were important to, for us to consider as we approach the Alderman, we'd welcome to hear them from you, uh, and, and appreciate the, the train of thought this evening. Thank you.
Um, no one's mentioned the movement of the stairwell and, and the bar coming out at Cafe Del Mar. I mean, I'm assuming everybody, okay, well, that's the issue.
Yeah, basically what they've done is they, they're taking the bar out and then they're moving the stairs that are all over, I think on that wall, we're kinda moving them over to the other side.
Spreading out a little bit, just so it's not.
Yeah.
So I guess, um, since we haven't discussed that, I'm assuming none of us have an issue with that.
Or the kitchen.
Or the staircase or the, you know, kitchen, yeah, okay, just to make sure that's.
I mean, it really comes down to, because you're already allowed to serve food out there with tables, but the question is the alcohol.
It's always gonna be a question, but this is such a nasty.
What's the net increase in seating because of the outdoor space?
So it's, I'm sorry, that's not a simple answer. Um, first to be clear, indoor, apples to apples, 63 to 63. Outdoor today, or I shouldn't say today, historically, before about a month and a half ago, you had 36 seats that were shared by Vito's and Tower Seven users. And what we're proposing is 28 seats, um, that are at tables. Uh, and then Vito's will also incorporate whatever they choose to on their half of the space, the picnic tables that are there. And so I think, I think to play it safe, let's say that that's a net increase in 28 seats outside. I don't think it'll actually be quite that many, but on the conservative side, let's describe it as that because we know that we are expressly adding those seven tables as four tops.
And I think, I think you said earlier that it was never stipulated how many seats, uh, just that outdoor seating was okay, but.
That's correct. There is an indoor seating layout that's contemplated in the SUP. And there is, um, a condition that says that use of the shared outdoor space for food service is permitted, but there is not an outdoor seating layout associated with that.
But did you say there were 86 for indoor?
The occupancy is 86, but that includes the employees who are standing.
Okay.
And the people who are standing in the restaurant, there are 63 seats in the restaurant, before and after.
Okay.
Were the tables outside, would they all be lower tables, high top tables?
They're lower tables, yeah. Um, Mr. Warner had a, had a photograph of them. Um, I don't, I should.
Is that the tables that are gonna be out there?
Yes.
The ones I got the photo of?
I'm assuming you took it very recently, yes?
Yesterday.
Yeah.
The grease trap, who mandates the size and, and, uh, like what's, you know, the larger one?
Public works, uh, reviews. But most of the time it's the only advice of a, uh, engineer, plumbing engineer to say, this is the size that you need, public works will review it.
So are you just one up in size, you don't have to, but you just are?
No, they have one existing.
I know, but they're saying we're going up in size.
We did some research on past board minutes, I think it was in 2008 that the grease trap was first called out, so we understood and anticipated that with this increase, uh, and with what we, uh, feedback we've gotten from the health department as well, uh, part of the, the kitchen remodels includes an actual dish machine and incorporated with that, bringing that area up to, up to snuff with the grease trap as well.
You know, I always said, what do we do with these things? And, and it goes even back to Mr. Thomaselli, when he came to us about the, um, the, the RBOs and, and I've always, and I told you this when we met with you way back then, I've always, I'm, I wanna see downtown cleaned up and I wanna see it, I'm always gonna support anything that's gonna make downtown look nicer, clean it up, make it, you know, so I, you know, I'm like everybody else, the word alcohol, or, you know, not, and I'm not, I'm not like alcohol, but I, but I hear alcohol, more alcohol downtown, it's just like, but I get that, I think we all kinda, that word just kinda goes, but it's not our decision really, is it? It's an ALA thing.
When it's a dining and a meeting, it's not like a store, I don't bother making, but adding the alcohol, you know, having a beer with your meal, a couple of beers. I, I would, I don't think that's gonna be.
Ten, ten thirty.
Yes, it's only 10, 10:30.
My point is, uh, what I was trying to say is that I'm, I'm for anything that's gonna make our downtown area look better. If it's baby steps, and that's what seem, we seem to be taking here, you know, Neptune's getting fixed up and then the Tower Seven building getting repaired and, I mean, I, I mean, I, I just don't see that big of a deal. I mean, I, I mean, it's a big deal, but I, me personally, I don't have any, too many issues with this. I'm more concerned about the alcohol being served on the Vito's side, you know, but that's, again, it's not, that's not for us to, to be involved in, but, um.
I have one, have you considered adding a bike rack? It won't be Jim Smith. Jim Smith, Jim Smith, I'm, I'm staying, go ahead. I guess.
Uh, the, the bike rack has been talked about, um, for several years now and there is a plan to put a bike, a bike rack back in the parking lot. Um, we are working through some parking lot stuff right now. It is our intention to improve the parking lot one way or another, it's just a matter of what the state's going to allow.
I thought it was one back there, there used to be a bike, bike back there.
No. So there, there's a plan to put a bike rack, I don't know where that picture is, but along the backside where it's currently landscaped, right behind that.
Like, kinda on the back where they come in? Okay, perfect. I just, you know.
I, I haven't, I didn't, I haven't forgotten the bike rack.
You guys do a tremendous business and, and they get there somehow and it's, you know, you don't have any problems, so I, I can't fuss about that. I would like to see, cause I do like to ride my bike there and, and that would be nice to be able to have someplace, but that's a great thought and I appreciate y'all thinking about that.
I just get, um, like I'm gonna say one more time, I can say it yet, I'm just a little more excited about the fact that they are cleaning it up and stuff. And I'm like everybody, I like outdoor seating, I like to go outside and eat and drink, um, but, I just, I'm, now, and then I wonder.
Being so dingy.
Well, yeah, we've always talked about, since I've been on this board, I've been on it for a while now, we've always talked about consequences, like, and that would be one of the things I'd like to, us to think about for a few seconds, like what else, who else is gonna, I could get them all for outdoor seating, but is this gonna turn into somebody going, well, I want my rooftop, um, cause I know there's some talk about someone wanting a rooftop bar put in down there. Is this gonna be the beginning of?
Very, very different animals.
Well, it is very different, but I, I can see it, I mean.
I think we determined y'all can't do, right?
Not in this place, Chris.
Alright, anyone else? Um, I mean, I guess, Tony, we can take a vote if we need to take a vote.
Yeah, I think if you want to, the board can not pay any attention to it, but, um, or consider, but you could, you know, you could, uh, mention some of these things that we, we talked about, you talked, a hard time to settle on the drinks, remove the chairs, you, we talked about use and liability, uh, and things like that, so if you wanna.
Yeah, and, and that's fine, I just, I mean, I don't wanna revisit the discussion we had two months ago, but I just don't think that it's necessarily important to take a vote, it's more of a mock, mock trial for y'all.
If, if you look at the, uh, SUPs for other, other restaurants, outdoor dining, uh, they're restricted to, uh, certain closing time on the outside and, uh, either limitations or no music. In other words, no live band. Um, or if there's piped in music, uh, you know, that it, uh, if there's a noise ordinance or there's a noise complaint, then they risk that they lose that. So I, I think that's the guidance that we, the guidance I feel we should give the Board of Alderman, whether they read it, they don't read it.
We can't give them guidance. We can't give them guidance for an SUP. It's a quasi judicial hearing, you know, I mean, you, you're welcome to.
Well.
I mean, I think his idea of.
We can give you guidance, we can't give the board.
And I think given the guidance, maybe to make a suggestion that you stop, you know, your hours that you stop might not be a bad idea to present to the Board of Alderman.
Wouldn't it be, cause like the conditions we put on Sharks Bar and other places?
But they've changed it since we did Shark Bar, it was CUP, now it's SUP and then all. Yeah, unless we can. We will govern stuff with, yeah, not really having anything but texting. I think it's.
So.
A great addition.
Let's take a quick vote, cause Tony wants us to take a vote. Um, then, vote.
I, I think so, the board doesn't have to, uh, as long as it's not a quasi, we didn't have a quasi judicial hearing and I think we can, uh, say you like it or you don't like it, yeah.
Okay, so, does anyone have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve it as written.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
Tony, I would say that there's a, um, if we're serving, if they're serving alcohol at 2:00 AM, that's, that's a problem. We're, we're telling them they can't do it past 10, 10:30 and.
A little dress.
You sound like. That's always correct.
Excuse me, just for the, nice little. Go in accordance with Tower Seven with their alcohol sales, stopping at like 10 o'clock.
Yours, SUP doesn't allow you.
Yeah, it doesn't allow you to do it at all. At all.
We're not your governing.
Well, now that I know.
You'll have to jump in front of the Board of Alderman to do that. Thank you, Ms. Brin.
Thank you.
You too, thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Good night.
Robert, you talking about the purpose of that?
Well, text amendments.
Text amendments, land use plans, uh, yeah, camp land use plan, text amendments, um.
Give me, give me an example of a text amendment.
Uh, uh, here's one that you need to, to take up at some point, and that is, uh, special use permits and commercial properties should not require a 20-foot side yard setback. It should be 15 or whatever the standard is, like for some reason our commercial properties for a special use permit require huge tracts of land to be between them and the road. But, um, I mean, like that would be a text amendment, you just change that number from 20 to 15 or what have you. Um, it's required by law.
This was, I mean, there was no reason to do this. Well, Tony can tell them what we said, they just technically can't use it in their.
Because in a quasi judicial setting, it's considered ex parte communication and that's what they will order, that's what they will argue in court if, if ever it gets to court.
They can't dig in, they can't do their research, they literally sit there as a judge and jury when they present facts and that's what it is.
It's unfortunate if we take some of the burden off their research by doing, by doing that when they have a full plate.
And I'm thinking if we can change.
Make a difference. Well, we can change their, just have a governance where we would not be held to.
We're not.
Yeah, that, the.
We are not.
We are not.
I'm saying, what we cannot be, but we can be if we change how we are governed, like we can, that was in our meeting, our initial meeting.
If the, if the Board of Alderman were to change that, um, I mean, there's two ways to approach that situation, either the Board of Alderman, uh, makes the planning board a quasi judicial, uh, board, which i- is pretty much a non-starter in any small town, to be perfectly fair. And, um, the other way is to change to conditional zoning and I just don't know that there's any, any, any appetite to take that on. Um, um, people get confused between a conditional use permit and a special use permit, just think it is exactly the same thing. Conditional use permit turned into a special use permit, conditional zoning is a completely different animal, so don't get them confused, even though the conditional is in there somewhere.
I've always looked at our role, our, our, our roles aboard to, to do all the legwork and, and turn over all the stones and, and, and bring things to light that they may not have thought about or, you know, that's how I've always seen our posi, our position here because, and that's, that's a little bit about our minutes too, cause then they can go back, can they look at our minutes?
Anybody can, it's public record.
Record. So they could see, well, wait a minute, now, oh, so and so said, oh, yeah, and that's how I've always seen our position as, you know.
You could tell, but, I mean, you could tell Mr. Frank's whole demeanor is totally different.
Yeah.
Than it used to be.
Oh, yeah.
He's like, okay.
Um, uh, I mean, for example, we're an ad hoc committee right now, um, dealing with the light ordinance. We're just trying to clean it up, reorganize it, modernize it, standardize it, um, so that's easier for everybody to understand, and that, that's a big change. Um, so the Board of Aldermen created an ad hoc committee so that the ad hoc committee could do all the research, um, lots and lots of work, and then we send it to the Planning Board. Um, if the Planning Board were to undertake this, we would be here, uh, all of you would roll off the board before we got finished with it at some point. And because it, it's a long process. It's not a large text amendment, but ultimately, there's a lot of research that goes into it. And the ad hoc committee can just meet much more often than the planning board. And then we come to the Planning Board and then you guys take, take what the ad hoc committee has done, and then you refine it and say, okay. You know, whatever, and then send it on to the Board of Aldermen and hopefully they will agree with.
Take our advice or not.
Yes, absolutely. Yes. Um, it's, yes, um, the thing is, uh, as far as, um, if your town has zoning, you're required by law to have a planning board. What that planning board does is decided on by the Board of Aldermen. And in this case, once, when one sixty D was adopted by, you know, a state statute, one sixty D, chapter one sixty D. Uh, they just basically said that because a special use permit is a quasi judicial decision, that you can't have a pre-trial and then go into a quasi trial, having already had that hearing, so to speak. So, I mean, that's, that's the rationale behind it. I, I don't like it, you know, I mean, we've done it, I mean, everybody's done it for hundreds of years, how we were doing it, but. Um, what I'm here to talk to you about is, um, whatever, uh, whatever Chairman Wortman wants to do with Agenda Item B. Um, we have, uh, proposed rules of order submitted by, um, Mr. Briggie, and we talked before the meeting, and you just wanted to make it a discussion item.
I think, yeah, I think it's probably better just to make it a discussion item.
You can, you can, uh, make comments, take notes, and then maybe take a, a vote on it at some point, or not at all. Um, I think the way our ordinance reads is, um, to adopt rules of order, which I have never seen our planning board do. I've never even seen a record of it, but it is in our ordinance. It is there, I promise. Um, that the Board of, but that, that the, uh, the Planning Board should adopt, uh, rules of order. And basically, all that is, is it just dictates how the, the meeting, uh, operates, runs, what's expected. Um, and then we take those rules of order to the Board of Aldermen, and they can tweak it however they see fit, and they vote on it, come back, and then, uh, at that point, that's how the meeting is run. Uh, it's pretty straightforward. Um, you have pretty much always done it based off of tradition, which is fine, um, but our ordinance does say something else. You know, it says that you should adopt some rules.
So what, what is a good, um, example to use?
Um, well, Robert's Rules of Order is an established rule for parliamentary procedure. Um, so basically, um, I'm assuming all of you have read, uh, this document at some point. Um, but this just establishes how often and what time your regular meetings are, what is a quorum, uh, what it takes to cancel a meeting. Um, remote participation is a pretty modern, uh, thing. Now, this is an advisory board. I think this is important, uh, to put in there. Because since the state of emergency, it has been lifted by the governor after, uh, COVID nineteen. We had some rules that were just sort of, um, most municipalities were just winging it as far as remote. Um, i- if we didn't have remote, then government wouldn't function. So, um, during the emergency, there were some rules established for it. However, what has happened since then is, um, people, um, you know, life happens, and, um, most of these advisory boards are all volunteers, and you take time out of your day, and maybe you're sick, and maybe you still wanna participate or at least show up. This just basically gives you some options to vote somebody in, uh, to, so that they can participate in the meeting. And the reason why that's important is because, um, because it's an advisory board, I don't think there's ever gonna be a situation where somebody's gonna be like, oh, no. Um, at, Mr. Keen can't participate. He wasn't even there. He was remote. Well, we do have, we, we have established through democratic uh, selection of rules that there is, in fact, a process for him to participate. I mean, if, if something like that would ever happen, so, um, this just, it, this gives you a. Right. It should be basic rules establishing, um, there's nothing ground shattering, earth moving, all those descriptors. Um, so I just wanted to, to give that to you and, and do what you will.
That does not exist now, that the planning board does.
We, exactly. We do not have that. We do not, the planning board does not have that.
It's safe to say, a lot of planning boards don't have that.
That is correct. That is a safe, that is a safe assumption. A lot of planning boards don't. Um, so this is your discussion. I just wanted to tell you what the, what the basic purpose was, and that's all right. If you have any more questions, you know, Tony and I will be happy to try to answer them for you.
So, assuming everyone's looked at this, does anyone have any questions about this document?
Where is the document?
It's, uh, it's Agenda Item. Says Agenda Item C on mine.
I got page.
Let me see if I got it in this. It's on here. Here, give her this. Here you go. Just give her this. I have a hard copy printed.
Yeah, I realized I didn't have it.
Oh, we, we emailed it. I think, I mean, you can talk, you know, you didn't email it to us.
I probably missed it. I really did. I kinda looked, because I asked Leanne and she said it's eight, so and so, and I went, I didn't, no, I didn't, page fifty four. I absolutely did not have it.
Robert, one thing we talked about, um, I think I've talked to everyone about this, or most everyone, um, the proposed rules. Um, in coming up with, uh, the minutes, um, I think it's, and again, I'll take suggestions. I, I think it makes sense to, instead of having ten pages of minutes, because I know that takes a lot of work. Um, now that we're getting better technology and all the meetings are on YouTube, uh, maybe just provide a link to the meeting, um, when we have minutes. And then just do bullet points of, you know, Agenda Item A, little description of what Agenda Item A was, maybe who, who presented, some, stuff like that. And then ultimately, the vote. Um, you, if you put a time, you can put a timestamp on it if you want, so this, if people want to go back to Agenda Item A, they have the link of, on YouTube where to look, and then they have the timestamp of where to go. I, I think that'll.
Not allow. Artificial intelligence that would listen to us.
Yeah. Minutes on this stuff. Is it written in here? No, 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 it's not. It's, it's not written in here.
No, I don't believe.
I didn't see minutes.
Yeah, it's, uh, the third bullet point from the, from the first page.
I'm glad I didn't have to do them.
Right.
Where?
Right here.
The minutes on here.
Oh, okay.
So just.
But that's not in.
Not in the, um.
It's not written in this dialogue of, of a, um.
It's just a discussion.
Outline. There you go. Spit that word out.
So I, I think that would be a easier, simpler way, so we don't have to read ten pages since we were there. Um, and if anyone in the public wants to look at it and understand what we're talking about, they can get a YouTube and do it.
I mean, I think everything sounds great, but I have a huge issue with us coming up with our own studies and comprehensive plan unless the Board of Aldermen has directed us to do so.
Typically, the Board of Aldermen should give us that direction. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go on my limb and go, uh.
I don't know that we need to have all that in our rules.
It's actually in the, uh. I think it gives us some direction there. Typically, what we, what is the best way is to get that direction from the board. And I agree, it, it is in our ordinance is now that we, that is a part of our, um, um, duties or whatever is the Planning Board.
Yeah, but it's as stipulated by.
Yeah, in other words, I always test things out with the board. If I have an idea, if I think it's a great idea, I just don't do it. I will, you know, I'll kinda mention it and see what kind of reaction I get, so.
I would, I would agree with Cheryl. I don't think that's, I don't think that's the intended role of the Planning Board.
Yeah, I think I have a lot of great ideas sometimes.
And when did we, when did we get the power to appoint a committee?
It's in the current ordinance.
Uh, it, it, it could be in there where, uh, the board could ask you to, uh, appoint a committee, and sometimes they, they could do that a little bit.
You mean like an ad hoc?
Yeah, ad hoc or a, a special committee or whatever.
I just figured we need to do a little wording so that this doesn't, um, to get some of us on the planning board to thinking, we have lots of power, and we're gonna start coming in here solving all the town's problems, and, and that's something I didn't sign up for.
So Article Three, Article Four, and Article Five are exactly taking pay the town's ordinances, so.
What page are you on?
Uh, page fifty six and eighty seven.
It, it's in the ordinance, I agree, but we have just stated that we didn't have rules of order. So if we're creating rules of order, I don't know that we need to include all of that in there as it's stated.
I, I would tend to agree as well. I think the rules of order that we need to create are similar to how we run a meeting. Um, I think that's important. Um, I think the rules of order should include, um, you know, the ways we vote. Um, the remote participation, I think, is important. Um, and then ultimately, we can have a, a session that cites the statute, you know, um, within our, within those proposed rules of order. Because, you know, Section thirty two, um, is what we're governed by. It, it is what makes, makes us, um, so consistent with Section thirty two.
So you're basically saying page fifty five, sorry, fifty four, fifty five. And, uh, just short of Article Three on page fifty six, so it's two, two and a quarter pages, so.
Say that again.
I think, yeah.
Say that again, just say it again.
Page fifty four, page fifty five, and the top four, page fifty six.
Okay, got it.
What about it?
Is what David just.
Something we could adopt as a proposed rule.
Oh, yeah, okay. One, one other thing that bothers me a little bit is that we have a chairman of this committee. So everything we do should go through our chairman, like, if, like Neil has, or Cheryl, or Leanne, or whoever has a bunch of questions that they wanna ask Robert, that should go to the committee chairman first. And then the chairman and Robert work together on that, rather than each one of us sending him in twenty different directions. It's just, let's have, I mean, because you have a chairman, the chairman should have a job, and the job is to be in control of the committee. So if we have, other than Robert telling some little something, but if he needs to do research and a lot of other work, then the chairman of this committee needs to know that, and he needs to work with Robert towards that goal. And not only that, and I like the fact that you included it in the email that you sent us, Neil's concerns, so that each one of it, that Neil's not working on his own and I'm not working on my own, Leanne's not working on her own, we're working as a team.
And I, and no, I think you raised some really good points, and, you know, and it was included in the discussion, and that was, that, that was my intent of why I sent it to the board, because I think seeing those things got us thinking along some of those lines, so.
But I, you know, I think that, that we should go through our chairman.
I did.
You did. You sent all these to, to David.
And then that's why I included them to everyone.
Well, that's what, you know, when Jim was chair, we usually, everything, and Jim was the main one who would coordinate with the Board of Aldermen as well.
Exactly.
Um, and I think if David's, I think that's a good, you know, we don't need to add me on burden duties to Robert.
Because Neil's saying, said, Robert, so and so, so I'm sorry, I didn't realize that, that, that you were.
I was, I was.
Did you receive it first, then?
No, I was.
And, and Robert's statement, when he put it out to people with the packages, if you have any questions, let me know, so.
Right, yes. If y'all want me to stop asking for input, I will.
I, I, I agree with, I mean, I understand where Kitty's coming from. We're trying to not have double.
Yes. And this, this is why I'm saying.
You're saying, so are you saying in the case of, uh, the questions that, the theme that, that email, when Neil sent it out to Robert and David, that he should, we should all get it?
If he, if David and Robert think so.
Yeah, okay.
But I think what she says, unfortunately, anybody adds undue work, Robert, it needs to go before David.
Right now, they're really working under a handicap. He is working, he's running the department all by himself.
She's starting to.
Seriously.
Well, I'm with you.
And so right now, especially, we need to be considerate and, and, you know, just think about him a little bit more and involve our chairman in it. And involve our.
Well, that is sure.
I don't, I mean, I don't have any problem. If that's what y'all wanna do, I don't have any problem.
But, but, yeah, I just think that need, I think seven people sending him questions in, I mean, think what that would be.
Well, I always call, I always call us, I always text for us and say, I hate to bother you.
I did it three times yesterday.
I know you're busy, but this may be insignificant, but.
But I, I understand.
Like that, I don't mean that.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, long research things that he got, you know.
Well, we've, I think, sometimes get lost in the weeds with things we really don't have any precedent. And I think David is a good person to bounce that off of before we have Robert's doing a bunch of research that we don't have any precedent to do.
So do we vote on what Neil was just saying about, you know, up to page fifteen?
Or we just.
So we're just discussing it?
I think, I think the intent was to discuss it today, and if we come to an agreement, we'll throw it on the next, um, agenda as a voting matter. And then accepting the, those proposed rules.
And then, as I understand the process, the Board of Aldermen have to.
Have to approve those, those proposed rules.
Uh, uh, there's gonna be a way to rewrite that we'll do studies, comprehensive plans, all that stuff as.
Requested.
Request or as suggested by the Board of Aldermen, no?
I think you just put a sentence out that says, consistent with the statute, consistent.
I can offer, look, so ever since I've been here, you always, anytime you, anytime you work for a town and they have their own ordinances, there's, there's a certain um, level of, I wonder why they did this, and th- this may be one of those situations to say that, uh, the intent was, if the Board of Aldermen thinks that the Planning Board should, uh, create a committee, then they can just say, I need you all to create a committee. That way, they don't have to, they don't have to create that power. You already have that power. Not to say that you just be creating committees every other Wednesday, you know, for, for what have you. But the fact that you have the power is so that they can tell you to use it. That's, that's only an interpretation, and it may just be my opinion. I don't know what the intent of that ordinance was, but it is in the ordinance, and you can create a committee right now if you wanted to. I'm just not sure that the Board of Aldermen would be on board with your committee formations.
They've always said to the planning board, would you do?
We've always taken direction from the governing board.
Yes.
I just, yeah, I suppose, wondering if there was some way to word it. I like those things, but I think it needs to somehow state as directed by the Board of Aldermen. We have those powers.
Uh, I mean, that would be a, that would be a policy clarification, but as it exists, uh, as it is written right now, you, you can form a committee tonight if you wanted to, but I probably wouldn't.
No, I think, I, I think it says suggested to the board.
Okay, so I don't have it in front of me, but I, but I, I believe that it says that you can.
Okay. I don't think the rest of it.
Sounds good. So I guess what we can do is clean that up just a little bit, what Neil said, page one, page two, and that.
I do have one more, um, concern about, um, page one, as far as when you receive your packets. Uh, we are, uh, probably ahead of schedule if we get you the packets by Thursday. Um, seven days, uh, that gives us approximately two weeks to put the packet together between meetings, so.
Add in the ordinance too?
It's not.
Okay, so where did the seven days come from?
Me, it was- Of the, it's in the, it's in the document. Yeah, it's-
I thought all this was taken from the ordinance.
No, 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 not all of it.
Oh, okay.
Right, um- Historically, we have given you the packet Thursday, uh, before the meeting. And occasionally, if things are running really tight, and it's a busy agenda, then we'll get it out on Friday. But I don't know that I have ever had the packet ready, um, the Tuesday before your meeting. Uh, so I mean, that might be, that might be, uh, difficult.
Is there a town with their standard in the-
There's, there's no standard spelled out in our ordinance, um, just historically, we've always tried to get it to you by Thursday. And I, I mean, Tony's been here for-
Well, I think we need to work with what's reasonable right now.
Yeah.
I mean-
What, what was your question, Neil? I'm sorry.
I was going to say, what is the requirement on the applicant? What requirement on the applicant?
So as far as an application is concerned, um, for special use permits and text amendments, there's two, uh, conflicting times there, but it's, we're just going to say, essentially, it is 30 days before the next planning board meeting is when we require the, um, uh, the application to be heard at the following, the, the month after, uh, planning board meeting. And occasionally, the reason why it does get tight for us is because, I mean, I'm just going to give you a whole slew of excuses. I was, Tony and I both were in a floodplain managers conference this week, and we'll be there again tomorrow. You know, I mean, things like that, or if a town, the town manager or the Board of Alderman, uh, want us to tackle something real quick and get it on the next planning board, we, we do that, um, somewhat often. Because if it is a staff or a Board of Alderman initiated text amendment, or, um, something they want us to look into, there is no requirement for that. Uh, that requirement is only for applicants. The town isn't really an applicant. They just have us do things. So that's, you know, but we do run out of time.
So you're saying it's 30 days?
Right, for the, for a special use permit or, uh, text amendment and whatnot.
Okay. So within that 30 days, you're saying you need till the Thursday before the meeting, before the Tuesday meeting, to be able to deal with that. Is that because you're not getting the full information from the applicant?
Um, well, it, no, I don't think it's because we're not getting the full information from the applicant. I mean, a lot of it does have to do with, um, with minutes, for example. Um, if we ha- if we end up with a two and a half hour meeting, um, that is, that is approximately, I've done it several times now, um, that's about 200 pages of raw transcript, um, that I try to distill down into something that means something. And so from a two and a half hour meeting, I take about 200 pages, and I give you about, uh, 10 pages of-
If we did a way with-
You know, narrative, essentially.
Would that make your job easier?
It, it would, yeah. I mean, I'm not going to lie.
So why are we doing the minutes when we've got recorded evidence?
Well, I mean, there has been pushback in the past. I mean, I've had minutes be rejected because it wasn't, I mean, you know, not approved because it wasn't comprehensive enough. I mean, you know-
I think, I think we need to do minutes. I mean, for votes, I think it's just-
Oh, we're not talking about not doing minutes, well.
Is what I said, is what I said a viable term?
Action minutes are how it's always been historically done, until we had no planner for six months, and then Sylvia came in and did everything verma- verbatim, and then everybody got used to verbatim, and then I was expected to do verbatim.
Yeah, but I, I don't like the idea of the link to the, does the Board of Alderman do minutes?
Oh, yeah.
Written?
Yeah. No, it's, um-
It's different.
But we need better-
Okay, yeah, there, there, but it's a different, it's quasi, it's different. It is different than a-
Sylvia used to put-
Oh, yeah.
Every single word. Lance does not do that.
So minutes are your biggest burden in getting that packet together, or a big burden.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a pretty big task. It is not an insignificant task, I'll say it that way.
So any way to get a better audio and, and video? I mean, I've watched tons, I watch a lot of Board of Alderman meetings. If I can't come, I'll go back and watch them, if they're even there.
Did you watch this past month?
I did. I did.
Was the audio better?
Yes.
Was it? Okay.
Because you're right, I've listened in the past, because the meeting I missed, I, there was lots of times I couldn't hear.
Yeah, me.
But I did watch it this last time, because I didn't vote, and it, Robert and I talked about it.
Yeah, we, we already changed it.
Thank you.
So what I, what I've done, um, for the audio at this point, on the last minute, of the last meeting, that is completely different than all previous meetings, was I have, the town provides for us a full Adobe suite, uh, which involves some video editing software. So basically, what I do is I record with this voice recorder here, and then I take the Zoom, uh, which is through that microphone right there, which is a pretty high dollar microphone. I take the video and this audio, and I splice it together so that you hear this podium really well. And I've changed that microphone a little bit, and from my office, you guys all sound great. So we'll see how that goes tomorrow when I start working on the video for the meeting.
Robert, there is a software called RealA, and you basically poke it in with your, your stream, and it records, uh, it, it will summarize it. So it's an AI, you got to, to what Adam was saying. I have a client that uses it regularly now, and they're, they're, they feel that they're, uh, what they found is that it's, it's pretty consistent. Every now and then, if you have a, like a, a central microphone, you can't tell, you can't pick up who the person is, but if you have people on a Zoom meeting, so to speak, they individually, you know, it gets linked to their, which is not-
Right, and I can tell you the process that I do now. This is just a discussion about what, what you guys expect of, of me from the minutes. What I do now currently is I take the audio, um, with the, the spliced up, you know, I, I align the peaks so that both of these go at the same rate, and I cut out whatever's the quietest part. When I upload it to YouTube, uh, Google automatically transcribes the video for you, because they're scraping YouTube in order to train their large language models also. And I take that transcript, and I re-watch the video, and I cut out the parts, uh, and then I paste it into AI and say, summarize this. You know, and that's just each individual talking. So what ends up happening is, that saves me a lot of time, believe it or not. It saves me a lot of time because the, because, um, GPT is, GPT-4, I subscribe, is, uh, summarizing the dialogue that is occurring. And then I put a name and a timestamp to it. It, it saves a lot of time. There's absolutely no way I could get those really long minutes verbatim to you in any reasonable amount of time if I didn't use it. So at this point, I'm sort of dependent on it. But Neil's right, there are some softwares out there that will do it for you.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm down here.
So try, try those, um, action minutes-
Okay.
For this, for the next, um, meeting, and then let's see how we like them.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm always available to tweak or change whatever you guys want, because, I mean, we're here to serve your interest. I mean, you are the public, and you're, you're appointed for a reason. So I mean, whatever's, whatever's easier, best, and, you know, how, whatever serves you the, the best, I mean, but w- we do have a lot of other responsibilities with, you know.
So you're saying five days for the getting packet, rather than seven?
I mean, that would be, that would be useful, and historically, we haven't had any issue with that, so I mean, I don't-
And I think our i- issue's not been as much as a packet, as much as it's when they come in and don't, and present all this stuff that wasn't in the packet.
Yeah.
I think that's been the biggest issue.
Above them, don't you think?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I will say that, um, sometimes, like, um, like Sam and Matt, they often do have, um, PowerPoint presentations that they don't give you, but it basically just recaps what's in the material that they gave you. They're just trying to summarize it for you so that they can explain it. I mean, they're trying to sell it to you, really, you know, so.
I'm glad that we didn't have to get through that eye test that, that- But Matt's color choices, I mean, the slides are ridiculous.
Right.
Anyway.
Matt, Matt needs an aesthetic designer.
All right, guys. All right, we're going to do, um, old business, know-all business, other business from mayor or board members. I think you have a-
This, yeah, just a quick thing. We, when Hank Miller's daddy died, um, I reached out to whoever y'all were on the board, but, to the board members, and I made a bunch of food and sent over there on behalf of the planning board, and we just got a thank you note from her. She wanted us to, just to, you know, to read it. Y'all just says, "We are appreciative of your kindness and support during this difficult time," but I'm new gene.
I wasn't sure everybody where that Karen's daddy passed.
Yeah. No. Yeah, I didn't know that.
Well, I didn't know her daddy had passed.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but we hadn't really been, we didn't have a meeting. It, it, right in March.
And there was nowhere to take food for her.
There was not a-
He was up in the mountains, you know. So we couldn't do for her what we did for Hank's, um, daddy.
Well, I, I wasn't saying that. I just didn't know he had passed, and I asked her, ran into her somewhere.
Couple, three months ago.
Yeah, a little bit.
But, well, I just, I want to say one thing. Whenever that does happen, when anything happens in the town, everybody just reach out to me. I'll take care of the food on behalf of the planning board, and that'll be that. Easy enough.
I make a motion? It is?
In a second. On further-